Wish to address the board tonight. If it's on committee at the whole, obviously you'll be recognized as committee at the whole. But if this is, you know, a totally different topic, you can say hi if you want. We don't have that many.
Please go forward.
Is that Jermaine to what?
To nothing.
Oh, yeah, that's good then.
Say hi.
Sounds like a Seinfeld episode. No, I'm only kidding.
Julie Simpson, 21 Monterey Drive. As you, most of you know, I've met. I was recently elected to Lake County Board and I just want to let everybody know that I look forward to working with everybody cooperatively. And if anybody needs anything, to not hesitate to reach out.
That it?
That's it.
Anything good going on at the county or nothing?
I think it's more exciting here tonight, so that's why I'm here.
Boy, okay, thank you.
What's the comment for anything on the agenda now or?
Well, no, we're going to committee at the whole.
That'll be on committee at the whole.
But that will be on the.
This is the board meeting basically to take care of the business from the last committee at the whole. Okay. All right. So this is, yeah, well, I already did it. Village President swearing in a village deputy clerk. You got anybody that wants to do this before you?
You have to do it. You are the clerk.
Do what?
And the clerk's not here as.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, okay, well then. Go. You got anybody who wants to take a picture of you? Now depressed? Yeah, well, you may regret that. Here, all right, yeah, you just come here. Okay. Well, congratulations within reason.
Thank you to the board.
Okay. I, John Petrow.
I, John Petrow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
You defend that one too?
I'll defend that one too.
That's what we're adding words when I was covering the poll, right? And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And then I'll faithfully discharge the duties of.
The office of deputy village clerk according to the best of my abilities. Is that right?
Yes.
Oh, we already swore them in before.
The office of the deputy village clerk for the best of my ability.
Okay.
Thanks again, Morden, 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 Mayor. I appreciate it.
Okay, well, Dave.
Dave give you a standing ovation.
Dave got standing.
Okay. Yeah, you got to sign this. There you go. Okay. Next report is Finance Director Treasurer.
I just wanted to bring your attention to our FY '20 budget calendar and to let you know that it's moving along forward and well. And we have a couple deadlines coming up. On February 19th, we have the proposed budget that will be distributed to the board. And then we will actually post it on the village's website by that Friday. One important thing I'd like to draw your attention to is we would like the village board, if they have any questions, to meet with the department heads or specific employees during the week of February 25th through March 1st. Also, the, there will be the actual presentations to the board on March 5th. It'll be the Police Department and Public Works Department. And on March 19th will be community, ah, sorry, Community Development, Administration, Finance, and everybody else.
We gotta get you a name tag.
I thought I had one.
Was over there.
I have one tonight.
Who's sit?
It's one down.
Oh, okay. All right. Who sits next? Am I missing something? Who sits next to you?
No one next to me.
Okay, all right. It's staff seats, huh?
Yeah.
I was gonna upgrade her.
The, the former Assistant Finance Director sat next to the Finance Director.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We had a couple of people. Yeah, okay. All right. Very good. Any questions on the, the budget? It's always stimulating. It's important. Press never shows up, you know, to be honest with you. You gonna show up for all our hearings? You're the only press here. Maybe? Yeah. Well, you'll watch it on YouTube, right?
Sometimes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, let's see, Bill?
But before you move on, I just had a thought. We had bandied about several times over the last couple of years, the idea of having a strategic planning session.
Yeah.
We've never done it. I mean, in the last few years.
Yeah, we were supposed to.
We had the questionnaire.
Yeah.
And I, we ever gonna do that in?
Well, you know, as the Herald said, this is a tumultuous year. At the end of the year.
Okay.
So needless to say, yeah, I wanna do it, 'cause we, we basically did, like, I think, a pretty, a rough draft of sorts.
Yeah.
And, you know, we jump into it. Ain't no time like, maybe there's a month then, I don't care. You know, I mean, it's okay.
Yeah, so I guess I'm putting it on your plate.
Yeah, okay, well, okay, everybody, when, when can you come? And we should do it on a Saturday, I guess.
After the next meeting? So whatever that would be, the 20?
Well, everybody's got a check, you know. Does everybody wanna let, you know, Liz know?
I can do that.
I know I'm not available yet. I'm not gonna be here for the next meeting or the Saturday following. I'll be out of town.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I heard. That's good.
It is good.
Yeah, it's nice.
It is very.
Okay. In any event, all right, we'll try to pick a date and we'll, you know, see each other on a Saturday, which oughta be special, you know? Okay. Next is, let's see, Building Commissioner. Summary regarding ordinance 219-019 and ordinance prohibiting the sale of certain pets within the village of Vernon Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this ordinance is on omnibus agenda for tonight's consideration. The ordinance was prepared by Village Attorney Hunt at the request of the village board. And upon its passage, the sale of dogs and cats would immediately be prohibited in the village of Vernon Hills. That's step one. Step two will be an amendment to the zoning code. That'll require a, a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then we'd bring it back to the village board. That would, what we would do is similar to the ordinance that's in your packet tonight is we would have a definition of a pet store. And in that definition, it would expressly prohibit the sale of cats and dogs. But it would allow charitable adoptions of, of pets and such. So this belts and suspender approach allows us to immediately prohibit the sale after tonight's meeting. But then it's appropriate also to make the amendment to the zoning code, which we will do, which will come back to you probably in a couple of months or so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, trustee Appenheimer.
So, thank you, Mr. Hunt, for working on this with me and everyone else, Gary. I, I would appreciate everyone voting in favor of this, but also I, I wanna further amend it. The thought was that we could perhaps vote in favor of this on the omnibus agenda as it is currently, but also I wanted to add a couple of things that, that we might be able to speak about quickly. One is, part of the discussion in, in, in one of the clauses, I don't know if it was in the, the definition that would go to the planning and zoning, or if it was in, in this one that talked about rabbits. I would like to add that to, to the prohibition. We all received a letter from someone, and I'd spoken with various people about this as well. There, there is a problem in some communities, especially when they're near some of these bad actors that are pumping out lots of rabbits. And I think we should include that in our definition. Secondly, there's, it's not very clear in the ordinance that we have prepared for us, the prohibition of someone acting as a, an individual broker, even though they would theoretically need a license to do so. It's just not clear that you can't import dogs and then sell them to another.
Who would be issuing the license?
So, I, I don't know.
Is that the state?
No. I, I think the, the situation that trustee Appenheimer is discussing is where someone would actually import the dogs as a business venture and then would flip them, if you will, over to a retailer to sell. And so the idea, or to, or to do it privately, where this would actually constitute a business venture. So technically, if they're operating a business in the village, they should have a business license. But what trustee Appenheimer is proposing is to just broaden the definition to make sure that there isn't some loophole or a way to easily skirt what it is we're attempting to accomplish here.
Because as written, it just says, it defines what a pet shop is. And basically, a pet shop is one of the good actors that we're thinking about, such as PetSmart that sells pet supplies. And it just says those kind of stores can't sell animals. But there's nothing in, in, in the ordinance as written that's, that prohibits those other kind of bad actors.
Can a, you know, can a child get a turtle or anything at any of these pet stores?
Uh, I believe they can.
Get a hamster?
Yes. Yeah.
Mice?
Exactly.
Okay.
Or they can come to my house if they wanna get some mice.
Well, depending on the time of year, you're right.
Exactly.
Yeah, 'cause they, they could get in anywhere you can imagine, you know? Okay. All right, anything else? Birds? How about birds?
Yeah, currently, currently they can, they can get those.
And this wouldn't, this would, none of these things would.
Yeah, it wouldn't.
Buy the birds.
Fish.
Gerbils.
We want to include rabbits.
Fish?
Fish, fish are fine.
Okay. All right, so rabbits kinda, well, you could still make your mind up at a later time on rabbits.
So it's, so as far as adding it?
Yeah, we could certainly add it at a later time, but I just thought since we're discussing it, we might as well just deal with it now.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Have the discussion. If you've got a contrarian.
No, it's not contrarian, it's just, there was a, a resident, Lorraine Claus, I don't know if she's here tonight. No. Anyway, Lorraine Claus sent an email to all of us. I forwarded it to Mark Fleischauer and asked him to look at it and respond. And basically, she was talking about the fact that she was happy that we're pursuing this ordinance, but she was looking to add rabbits to it. And I cannot find Mark's response, but I'd like to hold off on rabbits until Mark is back here, because he, he made a, a lot of salient points in his response to her about where our discussions had led us to at this juncture. So I prefer staying with the ordinance as written tonight, but have it as an agenda item on the committee at the whole for the next meeting to discuss amendments to that to include rabbits.
Well, how about snakes? Anybody selling those? I don't know.
Be honest, they, you know, you don't.
The issue isn't really the same. You don't, you don't find giant snake mills in, in Missouri that are importing all these snakes.
No, it's the exotic snakes you gotta worry about.
Well, they're, and I'm sure there are.
Ones that get their feet long.
Right, and I'm sure there are exotic snakes, but it, but it's not.
It's in Florida.
Where, right.
It's a Florida.
But, but the numbers are, it's, they're not in the, they're not in the millions like they are, that we're talking about for, for puppies and cats and huge numbers like.
Florida's probably got Panthers too, right?
Yeah, well, that's where a lot of the exotic animals, they come in through Miami.
There, yeah, there was just another expose about in the Everglades where the ecology has basically been ruined because someone introduced pythons.
Yeah, pythons.
Grand, or golden or something.
Golden python.
Yeah, golden pythons into the, that and they eat everything.
Okay. Who is sitting in manager Fleischauer's seat?
I am.
Okay. All right. Village Attorney Hunt?
It's appropriate at this point to simply go forward with this, and, and as has been pointed out, we can do an amendment down the road to address any of the other concerns.
To, meaning the broker aspect as well? Do you think Mayor should just?
Broker and the, and the rabbits as, as well as anything else?
We'll bring that up.
Make them up here in the next month or so as we see this implemented.
That's fine.
Yeah. Because I really would like Mark to be here, 'cause he did a lot of good work on that, so.
Okay. All right. Next item is the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through F?
So made.
I would like to pull F for a separate vote.
Okay. All right, so it is the first and second degree?
Who's the second?
To pull. Oh, there's nobody saying, okay.
I'll second it.
Doesn't matter then. Okay, well, all right, so there's a, is there a motion then to approve items A through E? And we pull F?
Yes.
Yes.
So made.
Everybody comfortable with those positions?
Yes.
Okay.
Very.
I second it.
Well, he already.
Here he did.
You're third then. Uh, you know, roll call, please.
Too slow.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right. F is approval and passage of the resolution 2019-007, a resolution appointing Anne Fairbain as treasurer for the village of Vernon Hills.
Um, I have, and I've spoke to Anne prior to this evening's meeting. I have no problem with her. She's, appears to be doing a fine job. The problem I have is that we're appointing someone to be our treasurer who is not an employee of the village. She is an employee of Lauterbach and Amen. And since this began, this whole process began about outsourcing the finance department, I've been adamant in my desire to see that the Finance Director and slash Treasurer be someone that was, had a direct reporting relationship with the village manager. So again, this is, has nothing to do with Anne in the least. It has to do with the fact that we are now appointing a officer of this governmental body who is not an employee of this. Yes, they're a contractor to an outside entity that we have engaged, but I feel very strongly about this, and therefore I'm going to vote no on this particular.
Well, you know, stepping away from the curb here, we got Gray's Lake that, I think the only, the only full-time employees they have is their police department. And they use an outside, you know, party for, for all their finances, public works, they, you know. So there's gotta be a model ordinance involved. There's gotta be, 'cause they've been doing it for years.
Glenview does the same thing, don't they?
I don't know. I know, I mean, I know.
They outsource their finance.
Yeah.
I, I have no problem with outsourcing.
Yeah, that's all right.
The financial activity. But, but I do have a problem with the person that's in charge not being a direct line report to the senior officer of our staff.
Being somewhat litigious, I, I like, well, it's not a bad thing because she's got, you know, professional liability covered.
Right?
What's the limits? We better get her certificate. Get her certificate, you better add us, you know, as an, you know, as an independent contractor, you know?
So you need a motion, a motion to approve item F?
Yeah, mo, yeah, is there a motion and a second, and I, I'll put that caveat in there though, you know?
I did, motion to approve item F.
Which caveat? The caveat of?
What, about being added as an additional insured and as, you know, the village.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Okay. Trustee Appenheimer.
So, I, I understand your, your, your position here, but I'm, I'm a little confused as to what exactly, what exactly the position of treasurer really means and what, what responsibilities they have other, that are different than what the Finance Director actually does. Maybe you can speak to that.
Um, I believe the treasurer also serves on the police pension board, and it's kind of a.
Ex officio.
Is that true, chief?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, in a non-voting capacity, so it's a ex officio, yes.
So why, why is that, that the treasurer serves in that role?
I, I'll defer to the attorney to lay out the. Essentially, it's a function of budgetary responsibility for the responsibilities of the police pension board. The village has a, an obligation to fund the activities of the police pension board by having somebody who has the requisite background, knowledge, skills, and experience that's already on staff or already available to us that we can lend. It assists them with a lot of the nuances of managing their investments and so forth, the record-keeping for that. And so it's very typical that the treasurer of the police pension board is also the treasurer of the village for which that pension board serves. Because technically, the pension board is a separate, distinct legal entity from the village.
Right, we make a over $2 million a year contribution to that pension fund.
Yeah, okay.
And since it's, and since it's a defined benefit plan, not a defined contribution plan, the village certainly has a very strong interest in ensuring that those funds are properly managed.
I think it's, in fact, I think we're covered under our existing policy and past policies as, you know, in a fiduciary type of a situation, you know, so. With that said, yeah, and the Finance Director, I guess that, that's like a, technically a promotion, right? You make somebody your Finance Director? You know, like Nakron? He started out as our, as the treasurer years ago, and then we made him the Finance Director, you know?
So we had two separate people?
No. No, we just made, we made him the Fin.
We just changed the title.
You need to have a treasurer by law.
Right, right.
You don't need to have a Finance Director.
Director.
Yeah.
And so the Finance Director is more the staff term for it. The treasurer is the statutory term. Treasurers can be elected. We've opted, the same with our clerk, to make it an appointed position rather than an elected position.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we had a referendum years ago to get, you know, to not have the village clerk system anymore, you know?
Right.
And she, she was actually the clerk and the village collector, whatever that was. We didn't collect much, or she didn't. Finance Department kinda took care of all that. I'm trying to think was, was, well, nobody's gonna know that here. Would Larry, it might have been, he had to serve on the, the pension board then when he was here, Larry Nakron. And Larry Nakron was our Finance Director and, and, you know, officially statewide treasurer. In fact, just to, to give us, you know, sleep insurance, he still works for us a couple of days a week, and he's a really, really bright, bright Finance Director. And he's kinda helped us, you know, for example, have the surplus we have, so. And you worked, well, anyway, I don't wanna beat it to death. Okay, you don't owe your vote, and, okay, you can't support it. So we got a motion, and we got a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
No.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
For the record, I'd vote aye also. Motion carries.
Actually, you have to.
Oh, I'm voting on it.
Right, you have to vote.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay, well, I, you know, I'm used to saying that, you know?
You gotta get, get to not say.
You mean an old dog can't learn new tricks?
Okay, so motion carries. All right. All right. Unfinished additional business. Any unfinished additional business that come before us?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, two points. Number one, Mark Fleischauer, the village manager, has issued us several emails over the last few days talking about the position that the current legislation regarding sales tax collection.
Yeah.
On internet sales. And as it's posed now, it would, I believe, be detrimental to us. But I guess I would like a back-of-the-envelope analysis done by our finance department as to where we stand between the sales tax that we're getting from people like CDW and others in the community versus losing that and getting the sales tax revenue that's basically in accordance with the Marketplace Fairness Act that never got enacted, but which now is kind of being backdoored and acted via these court decisions, the North Dakota decision, et cetera. So, anyway, I'd like to have a better idea of if the state of Illinois goes forward with the legislation as it stands, what is the actual impact to us? And then, secondly, I know Mark is working with IML in discussions and along with the, some of the House leadership to mitigate where they're at right now and make it a little more friendly to our environment. But it's something we need to keep our eye on. So I guess what I'm throwing out there tonight is we need some kind of back-of-the-envelope analysis to tell us how big a hit, or if this would be in fact a windfall if this is enacted as currently proposed.
Is this back-of-the-envelope, like a curbstone legal opinion?
Yes, sir. But a financial one as opposed to a legal. The second is, I guess I'm looking at Mike Atkinson. Have we heard anything more from the good folks at Centennial about their future plans?
They're coming to town.
Yeah, no, we haven't, we're actually in the process of trying to set up a meeting with, with the mayor, and we're requesting that update.
Yeah, I think we got, I thought it was set for the 12th.
It was.
Liz.
It is, okay, so it is, thank you. It is.
And then, then the president's coming in.
Yeah.
So.
That's it.
We've met with these people, you know, for a year now, you know, since they bought Sears.
Right. So what's, what's the timeframe? Didn't they ask to have meetings with, with us?
Well, it's.
As well?
Probably not till after this meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that, it seemed like they were in a hurry and were trying to accommodate that.
Right.
And that's the purpose of this meeting, is to say, hey, what's going on? You know, because they seem to be in less than a hurry. So hopefully after that meeting, we could, you know, provide a little more detail for the board.
'Cause I, I think they were playing, we were thinking they were gonna be, what, on the agenda for 219?
Uh.
Could have been?
Yeah, could have, well, let's see, it, or at the very latest, the first meeting in March.
Yeah, all right.
We would have had them through a public hearing process for the subdivision and had at least the, the lots in place, but we haven't had any.
Well, yeah, it goes out saying it'll be, and everybody's transmittal, whatever we discuss on the 12th, you know? They're, they're flying in from Dallas, you know?
Actually, their meeting on January 28th was canceled due to the snowstorm.
Yeah.
It was supposed to come in originally at that time.
Yeah, that first meeting in March, though, would be a little problematic, 'cause that's when we chew through the budget over a fairly lengthy timeframe that evening.
Well, we.
Understood. The, the idea was if they moved at the pace we thought they were gonna move at, then maybe they would have been ready, they would have been through the public hearing process and back to the board by March 5th, they're not on that pace anymore. So we'll have the meeting with them on the 12th, try to get an understanding of what So we'll have the meeting with them on the 12th, try to get an understanding of what their schedule is and where they are, and then report that to the board.
Well, we can always have a special committee at the whole with them, too.
Right.
You know, just dedicate, you know, an evening to them.
Might be a good idea, there might be a lot of community members interested in.
We all get the pick at it, you know?
Yep.
Yeah.
And people from the community can share our experience with them, because everybody will be invited. Okay, I just wanted to say the bill in question is House Bill 270. Yeah, and, yeah, basically, yeah, Mark, I, you know, I got Mark's memo here, but yeah, it's not good, you know?
No, sir.
It's not, it's, it's over the telephone, too. You make a payment over the phone, you know? Says over the phone, la la la, where's the rest of it? In writing, or via the internet?
Should we explain for the audience's benefit what we're talking about?
Well, we're going back to the potential sales tax being given to the community that the person lives in, or the company lives in.
Based on where, where the, where the delivery is, not based on where, where the sale's made from?
Yeah, and we, we kind of have a file on this already because of how deep we got into this.
Years ago.
Well, yeah, several years ago, and of course, you know, I'm sure, you know, somebody that was very much involved, Kevin Wolfberg, he's, he can be in the bullpen. He was, he was, he's a revenue specialist for Shane's office. Plus his father at one time was the head of the Department of Revenue, which isn't a bad job, you know? So anyway, that one died, a natural death, thank God, but now we might as well resurrect it. And I know we're already, we had about, what was it, seven or eight or 10 towns involved that would be, you know, drastically affected in some way, shape, or form. I mean, into millions of dollars of lost sales tax. So anyway.
And, and our specific interest is really, it starts with CDW, doesn't end there, but we.
That's a big one, though.
That's, that's a large piece of our sales tax revenue. Comes from sales tax that we receive from CDW for sales that they make within the state of Illinois.
Now, do you know what, what they're classified as in our ordinance? Does anybody know? You know, they're classified as a telemarketing type company, back when we did the approval.
Makes a certain amount of sense.
So somebody better check that, you know, counselor. Treasurer. You know, I mean, yeah, that's, that's, you know, it's over a million, it's like the shopping center, for God's sake, CDW, you know? In any event, okay, we got anything else on to discuss before we go to committee of the whole? New business? New business, or communication? Trustee Cook?
Yeah, I, I talked briefly to Dave Brown about this, a, a former student who's now at the high school contacted me regarding students crossing Fairway Drive at, and believe in looking at his, his map and that that he sent me, he was talking about what would be Cougar Way, which would be the, the north entrance to the high school area. And I guess it has to do a lot with the parking lot and everything like that, but he said there, it's a significant pedestrian crossing and was wondering what could be done to potentially put in some kind of flashing yellow light. I'm assuming he's, and I have not had a chance to get back to him, I wanted to come here first and then get back to him, but it sounded like he was talking about something similar to what's on Butterfield Road and/or the one that we have for Rustoleum over there on Hawthorne Parkway. And you said we have certain guidelines and stuff like that, and what would it take for us to look into this and see what kind of pedestrian traffic we have there?
Absolutely, we have draft guidelines that was submitted to village manager Kalmar at the time, we can resurrect that. What we've really done in most areas for pedestrian crossings, especially up in Greg's Landing, we end up adding the pedestrian crossing and all the latest requirements there. In terms of the amber flashing lights, there's been a mixed bag in terms of their success. We certainly have the one at Rustoleum that they financed, and we have a license agreement or agreement with them. In terms of those, the verdict is still out in terms of whether or not not that promotes safety, or what, it's really getting the drivers to stop. Are the drivers gonna stop or not? But that's built into our draft policy, but per your direction, let me look at that, let me resurrect it, I will share that with the rest of the board, and we'll look at that specific.
Well, and, yeah, and some of the guidelines, I remember when we've talked about this on numerous occasions in the past, that an unwarranted stop sign is actually a, increases the potential for hazard as opposed to being more of a safety feature. It, it actually creates that false sense of security in that. I understand that, and that's why I was saying if we could look at it, because the Rustoleum one at Peak Times has an officer there, which, you know, makes for a more significant situation.
Well, I was gonna say, do we, yeah, do we retain, hire some crossing guards? Does the elementary school have it anymore, or are they all gone?
No, they have.
Yes, they do.
You know, that might be an instant, you know, kind of remedy.
We could look into, you know, how, exactly how much is cross, how many pedestrians are crossing there, and, and whether or not it would be a, you know, potentially enhanced safety, or, or be one of those that is exactly the opposite.
I understand, let us look into that.
Well, a crossing guard, you better stop, right? I mean, there's gotta be state law that controls on that.
Yes, yes.
Because they're all over the place.
To get to the parking lot, the crossings.
Correct.
Because a lot of students park in the stadium.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, but I thought this has nothing to do with Fairway, then?
No, no. Where are you talking about?
This one's at Fairway, I believe, she was mentioning there's another location on site.
There's all kinds of crosswalks in there, you're talking about.
No, no, this is, this is where Cougar Way crosses Fairway to become South Memorial Drive.
Into, into the memorial park in there.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with, you know?
Not by the stadium, we're talking, yeah, right on Fairway.
Yeah, the pub, the actual public roads we control, you know? Anyway.
I understand, let me follow up on that, and I'll report back.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else to come before the board?
That's what I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the village board meeting?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Mark Bart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. First item is, gotta approve some minutes, right?
Yep, January 22nd.
January 22nd.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2019?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second, comments, questions, deletions, corrections? Anybody lighting it up here? If not, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Mark Bart?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. First item is Cook Memorial Library, 701 Aspen Drive, Vernon Hills, Illinois. Or should I say, Cook Memorial Library, Vernon Hills Branch? Towns, I, we had a meeting, and not just, not on that, on this whole project, but I made that request, and I don't know if it's falling on deaf ears or not, but probably isn't. Anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
David.
If it's okay for the record, should I review the summary of the planning and zoning commission's recommendation?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. And just as a reminder for the board, we've included some pictures of the proposed addition. It's a 7,500 square foot addition that would be located off of the northeast corner of the, of the existing facility. The exterior materials would incorporate brown brick, metal fascia, and a wood-like soffit finish, all of which would match the existing building. The site plan, in addition to, in addition to the building enlargement, includes expansion of the parking lot. Just north of the addition, you'll see five new parking spaces there, and then south of the addition, you'll see an additional 16 spaces for a total of 21 new parking spaces. So the planning and zoning commission conducted their public hearing on January 16th to consider the request, and generally speaking, they were very supportive of it. Their motion was broken into four parts. The first one was a motion to amend the special use permit to allow the addition to the building and the parking lot expansion, and that motion to approve, it passed with six in favor and one against. The second motion was to, for preliminary and final site and landscaping approval. That motion to approve passed with four in favor and two against. The third motion was for approval of the building elevations. That motion to approve did not pass, there were two in favor and four against. And finally, the last motion was for a plat of easement. This is an easement that would run from east to west, from Aspen Drive to the back of Aspen, the Cook Memorial Library, and then another one running along their east property line from their, from north to south. These easements would be in place in case we ever needed to utilize them in the future for access, especially in light of the vacant parcel of land that still exists south of the aquatic center. So there's no need for them now, they're there just in case we need them in the future. That motion approved with six in favor and one against. So that's the summary of the planning and zoning's recommendation to the village board. Representatives of Cook Memorial Library are here to answer any questions that you have, and I'll turn it over to them.
Actually, I'd like to ask a question of you, Mike. Why did the architecture not pass? What was the logic and reasoning? Because it's basically an addition with very similar approaches to the design and the implementation.
I can tell you from my seat during the technical review process, the addition that you see before them has the materials and the design that we encouraged as staff for them to do. We wanted them to have an addition that, that matched the architecture, hopefully with the end result being that you don't realize there was an addition there. We think from my seat, they've achieved that. From the planning and zoning commission's perspective, there was a couple of members that thought that the addition should stand on its own, it was an opportunity to create a monument for the, the village to enjoy visually. I'll let the library explain their reaction, but they'll, they'll explain that they thought their resources were better utilized on the inside of the building with the programs and such that they can offer to the community. That's the best summary I can give for you on that.
I mean, the issue, go ahead.
Well, no, so I guess I'm looking for another.
Sure, of course.
Answer to the same question.
Well, no, and I was just gonna say, you know, at the meeting, there was, you know, principally a P and Z member who, you know, thought, okay, we should have, you know, another.
Monument.
Yeah, another 5,000 square feet. Now, and, you know, to make it pushing like 12,500, I don't know if he wanted basement under all of it, but that's a moot point. I, I think at this point in time, does it, does everybody on this board, you know, wanna hear the whole presentation on this?
All I want is, I, I just wanna hear the, the answer to that question, and I'm good.
Okay, go ahead.
I personally am good to go.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay, you answered his question, let's get moving.
David Archer, Director of the Library District, you know, the answer to that question is, is we, as Mr. Atkinson had referred to, we wanted to put our resources into improvements in the existing building, as well as this much-needed expansion to serve kids and families. One of the things that we've noticed since opening in 2010 is, as anyone who's been in that building, it's heavily used. So in addition to providing that space for the kids, we needed to make some enhancements on the interior of the existing building primarily to accommodate the after-school kids that come from all, all along Aspen Drive after school. So we now have a new dedicated space in the library, and I think in your packet there, you see one of the spaces there. So frankly, we, we wanted to, and I think our trustees over here would agree, we simply wanted to spend our money to, to have it serve the best purpose rather than having a design that would stand out, and I think as Commissioner Atkinson had said, we wanted a building that would, that would be, that would blend in, and I think perhaps our architect, Dan Port, could, could address that issue just a little bit further, if you would.
I, I think you've addressed it quite adequately.
Wasn't there discussion about having a two-story building instead of having a basement?
There was.
And, and what was the, the cost differential for having a two-story building versus putting a basement, or putting both then?
The cost of an unfinished second floor, and that's the, that's the key, the unfinished second floor would have been 811,000. The cost of the basement is roughly $300,000, so it would have been about a half-million-dollar difference. If we had decided to build a project to accommodate a future second floor, that would have been about 493,000. And again, those are things that our board certainly could have done, but chose to make some improvements to address the, the current needs now.
You're, you're saying having the, the first floor with the basement and then making, making it so that you could later on add a second floor?
The 493,000 would be to add a second floor down the road.
After the fact.
And I misspoke, the, the cost of an unfinished second floor would have been 811,000, so.
For unfinished.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Dan.
Now, okay, so it, so the, the structure itself will be able to support a second floor whenever you, if it materializes? When you build?
No, not currently, you're saying?
No, no, so if you build this addition, it will not be able to support a second floor.
Right.
Well, what would it cost to put in?
It was about 490,000.
To do the, just the, the right structural?
Yeah, so more or less you're building, a roof structure is much lighter than a floor structure.
Yeah.
So we'd have to build a floor structure now in order that you don't have to build it on top of an occupied space below.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I guess, can it be done later, though?
No, well, it could be.
Not cost-effective, yeah.
Okay.
But you are creating a basement space.
Yes, we are.
That you're not planning on utilizing at this point in time. That is your first next generation.
That's correct, and, and as, we do plan to have that utilized for storage right away, but we do have that planned for future use. One of the things that we could do is, is take some of the non-public areas on the main level, move them to the basement, and open that up to the public. So we see a lot of opportunities for this basement to be very successful.
Yeah, you know, and that, no, no reflection on you two guys, but I think any number of board members here, whether you were up here or you just lived in town, when, when we got the library, you know, to finally build the building in town with our donation of, I think, the three acres, you know, we, we asked, you know, myself and other people on the board, you know, would, would you put in a basement then?
Yeah.
And, and it was, you know, it was cost prohibitive, but with that said, after three failed referendums, I thought, well, you could do it right now, you know? You know, I mean, build it, and we got a library, you know, without, it didn't go to referendum. If it was going to referendum, it might have been a tough one.
Yes.
Would have been tougher than District 73, I think.
And if they did the basement, we would have given a just free loan.
Well, I know, but, you know, crazy.
Actually, I think, weren't we, we were beyond that, I thought we were going to.
Give an interest-free loan for that.
No, give them 500,000, period.
Yeah, I don't know, we probably, we might have kicked that in no matter what.
Yeah.
We gladly accept that.
Yeah, I understand. But anyway, the, the history was, the referendums tubed three times in a row. Less than the high school, though, District 128, the Vernon Hills High School, five referendums, it took to pass.
Can I ask?
Not just one.
Sorry.
No, it was two, you guys were two, yeah.
I got a comment really quick, is there any reason in the future to expand again? Because if there is, maybe we consider building the two-story addition? Because it costs more if you're gonna, three years down the road, have to come back.
Well, as I mentioned, the lower level will be 7,500 square feet of unfinished space, so, so there's the definite possibility of adding significant public space in that, in that basement level, either by placing it down there, such as the meeting room, or a conference area or study rooms, or by moving staff areas to the basement and then opening that up to the public as well.
So are, are the current staff areas amenable for the public to enjoy now, in terms of the current configuration of where they are?
Yes, there's a staff area that, that we have temporary, that will have adjacent to a public area that can be easily transformed into a public space. We've put it adjacent to a public space, for, just for that purpose.
And I think you could say, I mean, you know, with a reasonable degree of certainty, it'll, it'll help the preschool kids during the day, this new addition.
The new addition most certainly will. One of the things that, that, that we have seen is, is just an increasing number of families with young children using our library. And for those who have been in the library, the open space isn't particularly conducive to the type of activities that kids like to do. I will also add that with the, with the planned kindergarten building just to the south of us, we will continue to have a close relationship with Hawthorne and have library services at our library for those students and their teachers to bring over. So we're excited about that opportunity as well.
Is there, you know, again, whatever the drawings, was, was there any, like, a wall separation at all between the main library and this addition?
Part of the design, we had a glass wall between the adult and youth, but actually, we figured out with the zoning that we have, we have it really graded where the older kids are near the entry, and then the younger kids are more towards the back.
Yeah, and it'll be, well, preschool, you know, they'll be pretty much the only people, the only people there, and then people as old as me.
And then the, the other issue was staff, so the service point wants to be staffed by both adult and youth services libraries, and having a glass wall in front of that was kind of prohibitive.
Yeah, okay.
For use.
I, alright, I don't, does anybody have any other questions there? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I, I just want.
Yeah, it'll be a motion to amend the special use permit for a planned unit development to allow an addition to the existing building, and to allow an expansion to the parking lot, and approval of preliminary and final site and landscaping approval, including building, building elevations, and preliminary and final plat of easement approval for Cook Memorial Subdivision.
And this is not considered a special use?
No. No. This is, it is, and we're amending the original special use permit that the board previously approved when the library was originally built.
Motion to direct staff what?
Second.
Mr. Atkinson.
Motion is second.
With the request that Attorney Hunt make certain comments now that we've previously discussed.
On cue. This is, this simply requires a majority vote. There is no supermajority or other quantity of vote that's required in this situation, even though there was one aspect of this that may not have been approved by the plan commission. It was not a request for a zoning variance, and therefore, there is no requirement. There's been some discussion, I know, about supermajorities versus simple majorities. Simply put, the only time you would need a supermajority, either by our ordinance, is in the event of a zoning variance being turned down by the P&amp;Z, or by statute in the event that there was a written objection from a contiguous landowner. But that's, neither is the situation we're dealing with.
Which could mean people within 250 feet.
Correct.
Who we have to give notice to anytime we do a zoning variance or a planned unit development, so, okay.
And Mr. President, if I could interject one last thing, and I'm not sure if this is the time to bring it up. But if this project is approved by the board, we are seeking permission to start an underpinning project before the permit is issued in two weeks. And so with your permission, we could start that process right away, provided this passes tonight.
Yeah, to do your infrastructure. Yeah, sure. All right, well, we'll attach that to the ordinance, or...
Well, just so staff has general consensus on the board regarding the early start, that's good enough.
Yeah, and you'll give them a permit.
Thank you very much.
All right, there's a motion, a second, to approve.
And sir, and site permit, too, please.
Site permit.
Well, we didn't include that?
Yeah, when I said we'd prepare the permit, it would be the site permit and then also the permit for underpinning the existing foundation. Yeah, their request was only underpinning. I want to make sure that the site permit is included in the motion. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Everybody, there's a link. Doctor.
So just to follow up on Trustee Takeoka's comments, I just want to make it clear that there's no anticipated additional need that you're gonna come back to your board or to our board two or three years from now, saying you need a little bit more space that we should have?
Well, I can tell you that Aspen, with this addition, we will be able to fill the immediate need right now and with the basement for future needs.
Okay.
Okay, I got it. Now you...
I know you can't predict the future, but there's nothing that you're anticipating even right now that you just can't afford right now that you think is really important.
Well, I will certainly say that the budget that the board approved for this project, that $6.8 million, is the amount we can afford at this time.
Without going to referendum?
Correct.
See, that's a good thing. Does everybody agree with that? Not going to referendum? Or do you like referendums, Kerry? Huh? You know, in any event, okay. But now I'm gonna ask you, what, you know, what percentage of the population is a library designed for a town of 26,000? Is it like a 5%? 10%? I mean, I'm just, and I, don't even bother worrying about that, because I'm just bringing up memories of, with the Park District, like, how many, how, the bather load size of a swimming pool and aquatic center, it was a percentage of how many bodies that were gonna live in town. And on the busiest day, you know, you can get, you know, Christ, they think about 1,250, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, I know what you mean. And I kind of think when we talk those numbers, combining both of our buildings, the one in Libertyville and Vernon Hills, serving the population that we have at 60,000, so this would be about a 75,000, 80,000 combined square footage, which is typical for that size of population.
Yeah, okay, good, yeah. Well, you could always open a small branch, couldn't you, like in a shopping mall? I'm just thinking of shopping mall, you know? Or a shopping mall?
I think like a space.
It's kind of between, it's kind of between, it's kind of between the two libraries. All right, okay, I'm done. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Mark Bart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
For the record, I vote aye.
Trustee Schultz?
I'm sorry, where were you at?
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Takeoka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
President Burns?
I would know, you know, no caveats or anything. Okay, motion.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Welcome to Vernon Hills again, and just change the name, will you? Oh, you should have put that in the motion before you bring them back. You gonna be able, David, are you gonna be able to sell that to the board? Bonnie, come on.
We're a board member.
I'm talking to Bonnie now.
You have to sell it to me.
Oh, you know...
It's a done deal, then?
Oh, you're bad. You know? After what you said to me, you know? Okay. That's all right. Okay. Next item is the District 73 kindergarten building attached to the Vernon Hills Park District building. This is like, tonight's an intergovernmental sensory overload. So anybody coming up?
Yeah, as they come up to the podium, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I can give you a summary of the planning and zoning commission hearing again.
Yeah.
The rendering in front of you shows the proposed addition. It's a two-story building that consists of 18 classrooms, one multipurpose room, and an administrative suite. Kindergarten classes that are currently at Aspen North and South, and Townline Elementary Schools would be consolidated to this location. Each of the classrooms could accommodate up to 22 students, and they anticipate between 340 and 425 over the next 10 years, students that would attend this facility. Looking at the architecture, as a reminder, the Park District, when they did their addition for the gymnasium, which is just to the north of the addition, right in here, they oriented that building with the idea that the kindergarten addition would be coming at a later date. There's a, you can't see it in this rendering, but there's a connection point here so that they could share the gym and such. The main entrance to the building is right here, along here, and I'll get to a next slide where you could see how the queuing will happen, more elevations.
So that drive that was shown there is an old rendering?
This drive here?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, here, I could show you the current one. It's close. This is the current rendering as it stands right now. And as you could see, cars, by the way, north is to the right on this drawing, not to the top.
Do we turn it, or no?
All right, well, no. Cars would enter off of Aspen Drive, but all traffic movement would be from west to east in an attempt to keep as much traffic off of Aspen Drive as possible, and also to prevent any queuing on Aspen Drive. The illustration you show here shows queuing for up to 80 vehicles in the parking lot that serves Sullivan Center and the Aquatic Center. Vehicles would queue there in the afternoon, pick up their students, and then, it's hard to read on the big screen, you should be able to read it on the smaller screen in front of you, they would then exit going east through the south part of the Victory Center parking lot. There's an access easement there that grants the right for that to happen. And that was done at the time of the Victory Center construction. That would then lead them to Atrium Drive. They could either go right or left, depending if they wanted to go north or south on Deer Path. So all traffic, again, would be from west to east, minimizing the impact on Aspen Drive. That's how traffic movement would be.
And the reason we can go through the Victory Center, basically, parking lot, is because an easement was granted a long time ago, so...
That's correct, the time of the...
That's why we asked for these easements, right, Dave? Like we just did. Yeah. So, you know, then there'll be, what, three gates?
There will be, yes.
Yeah.
No big deal.
You want it's...
Maybe their presentation.
I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna do this for an hour.
Okay.
I mean, has anybody got a lot of questions for these guys that are putting the addition up? I'm talking to board members.
I have some.
Well, yeah, but I mean, okay.
Citizen wishes.
Oh, you got a citizen here.
Yeah, we want to hear Mike.
All right, Mike, I know your name, but state it for the record, please.
Michael Shank, 587 Central Park, Vernon Hills.
Yeah.
I had a big speech planned tonight, but...
Now, you want to do it, I don't care.
No, it's all right. But I think everyone on this board knows the history of this project and the school referendum. And this ref, this building is the foundation for the whole referendum. We all know the revenue coming into the district doesn't match, you know, for, we're underfunded, according to the Illinois Board of Education. So there's, we're limited in places where we can build. Having a shared building, everyone's on board, I'm pretty sure. The Park District, the school board, the teachers, I know who had signs in their yards, you know, most of you guys, if not all. I know that the village engineers have been working with the school board prior to the planning and zoning. They've been coming up with a solution. And most importantly, also, the community themselves voted for this referendum. 57% on a high turnout election, I think it was like 10,000 or 11,000 total. So about, you know, over almost 5,000. So...
Do you know how many were out of Mundelein?
What's that? I didn't hear you.
I'm all you kid.
Oh.
How many out of Mundelein, how many out of Libertyville?
Well, actually...
I'm all you kid.
Actually, he's my data guy. He's our data guy, so he could probably tell you right now, but...
Is that, is this Finfer?
What's that? No, he's at a candidate meeting, I think, tonight. No, it's Carl Borchers. Anyways, okay, so bottom line, so there's so much momentum moving forward in this district right now that we've needed. They just hired a new superintendent that everyone is excited about. They hired a new curriculum director. The referendum passed, and it didn't pass because, it only passed because everyone, including yourselves, were in support of this referendum. I know a couple of you guys were even out there helping us the day of the election, so we do appreciate that. But we know that the planning and zoning commission, what their recommendations were, shovels need to get in the ground on this project in the spring to open fall 2020. If it gets pushed farther, you can't open up a school mid-year. It's just not a good thing. And then you push that project farther down the road, the other projects, you have multiple projects going on at one time now, and you know you're gonna have delays and other problems there, too. So we're asking you, the ball's in your court now. I believe it's a supermajority for this one?
No.
It's not?
No.
Oh, that's good. One last, all right. I'm hoping 7-0, but, okay.
You can say that now.
But the, you know, let's not let this be a failure. I don't think you guys will, you know, put your stamp on, this is the time to put your stamp on it. You know, we all have, let it be that success we all envisioned. So I really hope you guys understand the big picture of this. I think you all do, and hope you make the right decision.
Anybody read Rick Cambick's article on the 1st of February?
Yes.
It was positive, wasn't it?
It was.
Was I kind of positive?
You were.
Well, I'm positive about this.
We were all, you're... I did say, you went on public record supporting the referendum.
I know.
And it was...
Plus, but, you know, we, he, Rick and I talked, because the last time, I was like, you know, I don't know, whenever we didn't...
You were a grizzly bear coming out of hibernation.
Yeah, I wasn't mincing words, but, I mean, that's, we were all sold, you know?
Right.
The 12 million was here, and it's not there.
Right.
We know that. We sent our bean counters to meet with your bean counter, and we, we know.
But I think the progress that's been made, all of that, exactly.
Well, you know, and it's, you know, just to give a comparison, here we got 128, they're gonna do 26, 27 million dollars. They don't have to come to any of us.
Right.
Because they got a huge surplus.
Because that's, they're kind of in that ballpark of, they're, I think, north of 140% of adequately funded.
Well, you know...
We're 70%, so it's...
It's different, you know, boundaries.
It's a taxing, different taxing of the district. That's right.
And it's a shame, but, and then you got about three times more kids.
That's right. Thank you for recognizing that.
That's an issue, too, so... All right, okay, I'll be quiet. Trustee Oppenheim.
Schultz was first.
Okay. He doesn't say that.
I know it doesn't say that. I recognize that his light was on before mine.
All right, I'm slowing down here.
I learned something in kindergarten, you know...
You know, I'm thinking this is, you know, age-before-beauty thing, right?
Possibly. I'm not quite sure.
I don't know how to respond to that.
Both gray.
Well, take it under advisement, you know?
The only comment I want to make is, and it's more for the public, the planning and zoning works in a perfect world. They're looking for, in a perfect world, what should things be? And so they look at it through that eye. This board, or at least this chair, recognizes that there is no such thing as a perfect world, and certain things need to be massaged, maneuvered, reviewed, and with that, without having to really say anything else, even though he spoke for us that we were going to pass this, I'm speaking for myself that you will have an affirmative vote for all the elements that you're looking for tonight from this chair, because of the fact that we have accommodated to the best of our abilities, the needs of the Park District, the needs of the school, the needs of our traffic engineers, the needs of the folks that live at Victory Center, the needs of the parents that are already enrolled in the other elementary schools along Aspen. And so we've taken all that into consideration, and we've created the best that can be created in an imperfect world, and that's where we do, in fact, live.
You got the pitch bike, where you do kumbaya or something?
Yeah. Reach out and touch somebody's hand.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Oh, I shouldn't have said that. Luckily, there isn't a keyboard. Okay, Doc.
What item was karaoke on the agenda?
Oh, boy. Doctor Oppenheim.
So, yeah, I'll echo the sentiments of my neighbor here. I do have certain questions after listening to their meeting, though, specifically, and I don't know if you, I don't feel the need to go through the whole presentation, because I watched, I watched the last meeting, so...
Why don't you ask him?
So, I just want to, I just want to ask about the turnaround, that, the drop-off area, that's somewhat concerning to me in terms of have, it looks as though there's only room for one car to go through. There's no, no way to go around. So we're talking about five-year-olds getting into cars, and I have some concern that some of them, it might take a little while, and/or there's an issue or something, and then people and, or, um, there's an issue or something, and then people will be stuck, there's nowhere, nowhere to go, um, through, through this lane, and I don't know if, if they're, if you feel that you have to have that, that median there. I understand, you know, for, for some aspect of it, for safety, getting those other cars through the line, but, but I'm a little worried, cause at all the other schools, you can pull up, and then after someone gets in or out of the car, um, or even before they do, the car behind, if they're done, they can go around, and that, that'll move things along. And also, the way, the way you have it, um, right now, how, it looks like maybe five cars can pick up and drop off at the same time? Was that your, your plan? But right, the, the way they're, they're, the way it's drawn, only three, if, if you have them stop right there. I know at, uh, at, at Town Line and at the high school, they have signs saying, please pull up to the, you know, the furthest point to maximize the, the throughput, but, uh, was, was your intention that they would, that they would stop right where the crosswalk is, or would they continue further to, to maximize that?
That was the intent, to keep it single file. Um, there is an overflow, um, lane, just directly to the east of that, a bypass, per se, cause everything is running south to north here.
Right.
Um, and it's the preferred method to have everything linear, uh, one at a time. We don't want two cars pulling up next to each other.
Right, that, that's not what I was referring to.
But we did want the overflow in an emergency, the bypass, uh, lane being.
But what, what I'm referring to is, say, say even, even you're, you do what I'm suggesting, and have five cars being able to, to pick up and drop off at the same time, what happens if, if a kid drops a shoe or something underneath the car as they're, as they're buckling them in? Mom's gotta get out of the car, then the whole row stops, there's no way to go around them.
I can always take the bus.
Well, and, and that was, yeah, I spoke about that with, with, uh, Trustee Takoka earlier. Maybe that's your intent, to make it so that it's not such a good throughput, so that you'll encourage people to take the bus.
Actually, Dr. Oppenheim, that is the intent. Actually, even in Town Line, if you go and you see the parents do it, uh, I don't know if you have kids in Town Line, but we actually send emails every single day that you do not pull up behind, you should stay in your lane as a single file, because it's dangerous, and that's why we changed all of our pickup and drop-ups at Town Line.
You gotta stop now, cause I know who you are, but you gotta state your name for the record.
Sonali Patel, Board President for Houghton District Seventy-three.
And you live in Vernville.
Yes. Sixteen ninety-six North Sacrist Point Drive.
Thank you, Board President. So, so you're saying, it's been a while since my kids have been in Town Line, so you're saying that after someone, um.
It is a single file.
After someone drops off their, their child, they cannot go around the cars in front?
You're not supposed to, and all our schools, it is a single file, whether it's, uh, even at middle schools and stuff, that is the intent, because if kids are crossing over, it becomes dangerous, because you can't see them.
But why, why are their kids crossing over?
Because parents will not listen if you don't enforce the single file, and they'll pull it next to, because they're always in a rush in the morning, and they'll drop off the kids when you're dropping, you know, like you said, another kid is getting dropped off, and the kids are crossing in between cars.
You're, you're saying that even for kindergartners? You, you think that they'll, they'll pull into, and, uh, they'll pull into parallel lines?
Yes, they will.
And drop them off?
The single line is enforced at all of our seven schools. And we strictly try to enforce it with Dr. Parrott and some of our finest.
And, and, see, that's true at the middle school, it is single file.
It has to be.
Even at the middle school.
It wasn't, I don't know when that changed.
It is now, it has been, since we began queuing into the north side of the parking lot, it's single file.
Okay.
I, I do like that it's like that, because even, like you said, if the parent has to get out because they dropped a shoe, when that parent is coming back to the, if there's a car coming by, it's, it's a safety issue.
Well, I, right, I get, I.
Yeah.
I get the safety issue aspect, but, but on the other hand, I'm looking at the throughput aspect, it looks like.
Well, you, you hear people, you know, teachers, teachers aides out in the parking lots yelling at people, telling them to do the right thing, cause I'm married to one. And she's not shy when it comes, you know, it's the safety, the safety, the safety.
Right.
You know, yeah, and. Dude, is there any kind of cones or anything? I, I mean, I've never, I've measured a goat or one.
We do.
Yeah, they just tell you you're.
Oh, there's tons of cones.
Yes.
So, so back to the earlier point that I have, are, are they, are they gonna stop where that, where it's drawn in the picture there, see where that, that front car is? Is that where, is that where they're gonna stop, or are they gonna move two car lengths up? So you can.
In front of the building, uh, right there, where it's drawn, would be ideal, uh, line of sight with.
I mean, so are you only entering and exiting one car at a time, or are you doing multiple at the same time?
It's linear, it's one car at a time, is the preferred method, uh, you know, it could be two, perhaps, two kids are going out, cause the two or three cars are right next to each other, um, but it would be linear.
No, linear is, but the crosswalk would probably have three cars, three to four cars, where, where the line of sight would be towards the entrance.
Right, but, but there's, there's certainly room for, for the, this front car to move up, right? Do you see what I'm saying?
Move up a car length.
Right, so, okay, so you might have maybe five, potentially five picking up and dropping off at the same time, and you're not. So then, uh, I just wasn't sure if, if, if the idea was that they had to stop before that crosswalk, so, and, and then if that were the case, then maybe even consider moving the crosswalk over, so that you could maximize the throughput.
Yeah, okay, well, and, and, you know, the, again, to exit out of these vehicles with a, a kindergarten child, you know, by that age, some of them can accomplish putting on their seat belts and, and taking their seat belts out, so it's not like you got, you know, every, and I'm not saying there isn't some parent that's gotta go help the kid, but, you know, I know I had a five-year-old grandson, he's pretty adept at, uh, taking it off, putting it on.
We have teachers and assistants helping them.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So, because we don't want the parents to get out from their side to come off the way across. So we do, uh, and they will definitely, since it's a kindergarten building, they will have assistants there to help them get in.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
And, and the bus is still available.
Well, yeah, well, you wanna speak to that, you know, President, about the waiving the, the fee, or is that top secret?
No, it's not top secret, but we haven't gotten there as yet for discussion. It is an administrator's, uh, uh, it is their request, but we haven't actually run full numbers, and it will be a court decision when we get to that, so.
It'll be an action item for next year for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
School budget year, when we do it, when we start our budgeting, we'll have to include it as a line item.
And, and as I understand, you're, you're anticipating maybe thirty-five cars or so going through?
That was the original estimate, we recently surveyed our schools again, and it's about thirty-seven is the current estimate. Now, keep in mind, uh, you know, the percentage of siblings, there's about forty-eight percent of kindergartners that have siblings in the other schools, so based upon that percentage, uh, you could assume, uh, about nine, uh, vehicles, um, you know, may go around to the other south schools, be it Aspen or Elementary South.
And the, and the plan was that they would follow through the path through Atrium, and then go through Deer Path and come back around?
Correct, come back around.
Okay, there were no accommodation for them to, and then, I know one of the, uh, one, one of the P and Z board members said, what's, what's gonna stop them from just parking right in front of Sullivan and, and dropping their kid off, so that they can go back out toward Aspen, cause I had to.
Well, you could get in the building, right?
We would try and minimize that behavior, we certainly would encourage them, uh, to stick to that and encourage the bus.
What about the, the timing of the, the schools for the kindergarten versus, uh, say, the elementary schools? In terms, there'll be, there'll be, I would imagine lots of families that have a kindergartner and a third, or third grader, or whatever, if they're gonna drive one kid, they'll wanna drive both of them, is it?
Sure, it would be staggered to minimize the traffic on Aspen, um, being considerate of the other three schools across the street, as well as with Victory Center, uh, being sensitive to their three o'clock shift change. And so, the, the, the schedule we would recommend is a school start of eight twenty AM, with it ending at two thirty-five to ride.
So, eight twenty for the kindergarten?
Yes.
And then what about, what about for the elementary school?
So, across the street, uh, Elementary South, is that the, yeah, so that's eight forty, that'd be tw- twenty minutes later, uh, and then Aspen is at seven fifty-five, about twenty-five minutes prior to the proposed start time.
So, so is that enough time, then, for someone to drop off their kindergartner, and then go all the way through Deer Path, and then get their elementary school child to school?
Typically, but when you have bad weather days, um, it's worse on those days, but typically.
Bad weather days, not a chance.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, they're.
Probably have a good chance. You said twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes, yeah.
Right, but, but this line could potentially take, I mean, they're, they're estimating thirty-five people, I mean, thirty-five cars, that, that's on a.
About ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes to get through the queue with thirty-five cars.
And, and what, what's that, how, how did you determine that?
That's our engineers.
What's that?
The architects, looking at our current schools, typically how long it takes to get a queue line through.
For kindergartners, though, specifically?
For all.
Right.
K through five, so not specific.
Right, but, but K through five assumes that there's a lot of those kids are second through fifth grade, or not, first through fifth grade, or not all kindergartners, which I would imagine would take a lot more time.
It would, and this would be our smallest school in the district, uh, just as it relates to scale, uh, seven hundred students at Elementary South, this would have three hundred and two, if we had this school running today, we would have three hundred and two students. It'd be the smallest school in the district, about forty percent of the enrollment of Elementary South, so a fraction of that size. And just keeping in mind that these, this is a new, new school, but it's not new students entering this area. They're being transferred offset from the north campus as well as the south.
What, what's the time window you're allowing for early to the last minute? So the last minute is eight forty, no, eight twenty, eight twenty is the, that's when the bell rings, right?
When can they start?
Yeah, when does the building open?
I think it's half an hour before by contract.
Okay, so there's a half-hour window to get thirty-seven cars through there, and is that, alright, no, the thirty-seven.
You're saying that's when, that's when the building opens, when are the teachers or administrators, whomever?
Same time, yeah, yeah.
So they, they will start accepting kids, taking them out of the cars beginning a half hour before.
Actually, we brought in a before-school program, and, uh, it starts at six thirty AM, and we have about twenty families that participate in that.
And you'll probably get more.
Kids today.
Yeah, and you'll probably get more because of this.
Probably get more.
And with regard to the dropping off at the wrong place.
Drop, be in your place, and then walk into the building.
Yes.
But, yeah, with the dropping off at the wrong place, when the queuing was first changed at, at Middle South, to the back lot, um, traffic goes right past the entrance to the staff lot, and there were a number of people at the very beginning who, because they didn't wanna wait through the long queue going around that north lot, were cutting into the staff lot and dropping off, and it, that was very quickly changed, that that was not the appropriate thing to do, and, and, and that disappeared quite quickly, and I don't even think in the last couple of years, we've even seen anybody do that, so.
And the horseshoes for what? In front of the building?
That's for the buses.
Buses.
Strictly buses. Buses only, right in the morning, yes, and afternoon.
So we've got thirty-seven cars approaching the building in the morning, over a half-hour window, of which, there's a good potential that of those thirty-seven, we're gonna have a percentage of those in a preschool, or a, before school program, thank you, uh, that will then mitigate that thirty-seven by some factor. I don't think you're gonna have more than five or six cars at any one point in time queued up in the morning. Now, in the afternoon, that's a, that probably is a bigger difference, but I don't know how many the, the total enrollment of the three hundred to seven, or four hundred kids that you're gonna have are going to participate in the after-school program.
Fifty-five right now.
Fifty-five right now, that'll probably increase.
Kindergarten age?
Yeah, so we're talking about maybe three hundred students, and then of that, there's gonna be a significant portion that are gonna be on the bus, so, I think we've beaten this horse pretty raw and pretty dead.
Well, not, well, not only that, I mean, this is gonna have the ability to expand to, what, four fifty?
It's currently designed for four fifty.
Right.
And we're at three oh-two, so there is, uh, a great capacity for the future, and the benefits of this location do outweigh some of the inconveniences, um, you know, be at the five-million-dollar gym, um, the fact that the kitchen's across the street at Middle South, we would utilize that, uh, facilitating, uh, working with the library as well, um, not having to, um, you know, work out the stormwater as well, that that's already factored in, just a great benefit for taxpayers as it relates to these facilities already existing at this location.
This side of the board is done for a while.
Thank you.
I got a trustee Markwart, or it was trustee Takeoka first.
Yes. Go ahead. Yeah, we're, we, we need to, uh, sort of aggregate all this information. Alright, so here's my perspective, first of all, I don't think there's any issue with moving forward with what the community wants here. They voted, they came out, no issue there, I don't think there's any issue, Park District supports, you know, you know, this whole situation. So I think, with the, as far as the Planning and Zoning Board is concerned, I watched it along with Dave, you know, Dr. Oppenheim, if you really, you gotta really appreciate, our Planning and Zoning Board is awesome. We have a land use attorney that is the commissioner, you have two architects, they know what they're doing, they have their opinion, as Jim said, maybe they get a little too technical, they, you know, and they give you your opinions on, you know, how they would ideally want something done, but I think you should appreciate, we got a great P and Z board, after watching that.
Do you know why?
Because you appointed them, of course. Got it.
Well, they, some of them.
Of course, alright, I will give you your kudos on that.
Yeah, why not?
Your, your honor.
Wouldn't have, right, but you didn't say that.
But what I'm saying here, you know, I sent, uh, you know, the question to, you know, Dave Brown, he's, you know, he's the Director of Public Works. What's your take on it? Because if your take is, you know, well-appreciated from our perspective, and if you support this, and you have some ideas on how we can just make it a little more efficient, then let's move this thing forward, because as far as I'm concerned, you just gotta amend your application on eighteen point three, those statements from, you know, how, you know, Commissioner Morris, and I'm sure you'll do that. Okay, you already did that, so, then I would just like your opinion, Dave, and you can just get this moving forward.
So, we've been working on this project twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, um, we've had multiple meetings between all the different governmental agencies, uh, we've had really good discussions, we've done a lot of planning, we've worked together on this. Collectively, we all paid for a consultant to look at traffic issues on Aspen, that was in July of twenty sixteen. Some of the problems on Aspen that existed before, we've worked really well with the school districts and the police department, et cetera, to mitigate those. The Elementary South, so the south side of, uh, the west side of Aspen, south end, um, we had a lot of problems. We had, uh, videotapes, uh, cameras showing different behaviors. Uh, we worked with them, it's substantially better, as you discussed, in terms of the junior high school. Before, uh, parents used to drop off in the front, and the buses were, uh, used in the north end. We worked through that, and we were able to solve that also. In terms of this, um, the kindergartens, and, um, I appreciate, since the Plan Commission deliberated on that, we've got better information, we've met again with this group, and, uh, they did a head count. They asked the kindergarten, uh, kids, how many of you raise your hand that, um, are dropped off and picked up by your, your parents? And, uh, that number was the thirty-seven. Of that, of, you know, good forty-five percent or so had siblings, um, so reduces the number also. Them stepping forward and having this discussion of, within a certain zone, they used to charge a, a fee for, uh, bus service, and they're proposing to, you know, mitigate that. We're also looking to move traffic. Aspen Drive has concerns, because it's a linear road, you've got sixty, you got Aspen Point, and you got Deer Path. You have to get traffic off of Aspen in some way, because of the forethought we had when Aspen, uh, Point Development occurred, and whether Philip Road should be extended through, um, we reserved a easement for this reason, so we could divert some of this traffic west to east, as Mike Atkinson said. So, we've done a lot of pre-planning on this, this, this wasn't just thrown to us. The information that we've, they've shared previously, I think is mitigating some of those. In terms of Aspen, you know, we, we have in a, a morning peak hour, so between seven and eight o'clock, um, according to the study, four hundred, uh, four hundred and forty cars, the numbers that we're talking about are not going to weigh things one way or the other in terms of problems on Aspen Drive, it's, it's, uh, it's not the situation. We also have built in multiple flexibility in terms of the circulation, should things change, should numbers change. Uh, we retained a easement to go from, um, from the kindergarten, the north end of the kindergarten, all the way to Philip Road, should we ever need it, we have that easement in place. Um, we, we met with the Victory Center, we talked to them about any concerns that they may have, and, um, they were concerned, and we also looked out for the, the library. If you're sitting in the library, do you want a roadway in between you and the Victory Center? The Victory Center seniors, they like going over and, and reading a book, and getting out, and having some green space. So, my point being is, I think it's a good plan, um, I appreciate the different uses in this area, that you have a school, recreational, and library all in that area. Uh, this village board, the Plan Commission, et cetera, I applaud all of you in terms of the efforts on planning of this area. I think it's a good plan, and, uh, I, I don't have, uh, concerns. Uh, we will work through traffic issues into the future, should they arise, but it's not due to this development.
Okay, uh, trustee Markwart.
Uh, I wanted to agree with, actually, agree with, uh, trustee Schultz, uh, and it's not a perfect world. P and Z looked at their situation, and, uh, I respect them, but, uh, personally, I, I would like to go forward with this. I've spent time with Dave, uh, some time talking with him with the traffic flow, and technically, things can be worked out. So, uh, this is ideal, Park District, school system, library, all in one area, seniors.
You, you gonna sing?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll leave that to Jim.
Okay.
Um, I only do it in the shower, but, uh, I'm for it, so, uh, I'm, uh, all on.
Okay, is that it?
That bring, yeah, I, I wanna give it to her, cause, you know.
Well, no, trustee Brown.
I agree, I think with every plan, you can bring up an issue, um, as parents, these are our kids, we need to hold each other accountable, and be safe, and understand it's the safety of our kids, so we need to follow the rules. This happens at every school, so we need to enforce that, these are gonna be kindergartens. I am excited about it, I have a one-year-old, I, she will be able to take advantage of this, so I'm also for it.
Alright, well, other than that.
Am I allowed to talk again?
No.
No.
Tom, Tom gets a turn.
No, no, wait, this was a tie.
No, no, let, but.
You want him to go first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Oh, I'm first.
Trustee Oppenheim.
No, I, um, I just had one other, one other question, um, do you feel like there might be a need for an overhang as the, the teachers or administrators are standing out there unloading all these kids, if it's raining, for them to, to stand under? I, it didn't look like that was part of the plan in any way, did you consider that?
There is a slight overhang, I think that that's on the front side of the building, where they're dropping off, it's actually on the east end of it, so, uh, I don't think, uh, as DNR did their renderings, we've actually cons, you know, pulled it all up. The front of the building does have an overhang.
The front of the building does have an overhang, so where the kids would queue up in case of rain and stuff when their parents pull up.
You mean, yeah, right, right next to the building itself. I meant, I meant like closer to where the sidewalk is where they're actually being dropped off. Because that's where the.
The canopy.
Yeah, canopy, kind of.
I mean, we could definitely look into it, but as far as the front of the building, yes, for the queuing purposes, we do have an, like, you know, a full concrete overhang out there, but you can't see because it's on the back of the building.
There was a rendering on one, going back in time, that actually showed it was almost like a drive-through. You know, this is going back, which would have been, yeah, you'd have been covered like, like they are at, you know, the senior home off of Hawthorne Parkway, because you've been going kind of under the building, but that's not cheap.
You know, that was scaled back after the original bid with our second bid, which we're out to bid right now. It was scaled back.
If you put, you know.
But if there's, if it's favorable, you know, if the board so decides that we may.
Well, exactly. I'm, I'm, I'm certainly not looking for another referendum to, to, to build that.
What's the cost associated with doing, you know, some kind of a true overhang? You know, like, you ever see the, you know, the angle ones, kind of? I mean, what's, what's the price tag on that?
You know, I don't have my construction manager here. I don't want to throw an abstract number.
All right.
You can make it out of canvas.
As long as, as long as you can find a way to add it afterward when, when you get more donation.
Yeah, like for a day like this or a night like this.
Exactly. Might not be so safe with, on the.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, if it protected the surface that everybody gets out of, you know, crazy. I mean, with this, whatever we got out here, our canopy, you know, is dry when you get close to the building.
Close to the building, but beyond that.
All right, any other canvas? Trustee Cook.
Yeah, just to echo one of the things trustee Markwart said, it's always a good news, bad news situation. The, the design of Aspen along in there, this was not by accident. It was designed to be an area where we would have a, a library and a, and schools and the park district and a pool. And I mean, and, and like I said, it's good news, bad news. It, it's, it's good news because we've got all these great facilities there, which makes a great intergovernmental campus and, and, and multi-use campus. The bad news is it's going to draw traffic. That just happens. And we have continued to work and, and will continue to work to improve traffic flow up, up Aspen. We've talked several times about the potential for adding a right turn lane at, on northbound Aspen at, at sixty. All those things are, are still in play and we will continue to adjust to do that. And, and before we get to a vote on this, I do want to, in, in, in the spirit of transparency and full disclosure and all the other great buzzwords that we use right now, I, first of all, I'm not wearing this Hawthorne shirt tonight because this issue was on the board. We had a volleyball match this evening, so, you know, it was like, it just happened to be the same day, okay?
But I'm wearing the colors because of this.
I mean, but, but it, that was just pure coincidence. And, and I, I also, in terms of full disclosure, have to, you know, admit that I've, I've worked for the district for over thirty years, but I have nothing to gain by this, so I'm not going to recuse myself.
Well, you're retired.
Yeah, but I still work there.
Yeah, I know.
So anyway, yeah, I, this is, this is something I, I would like to see us go forward with and, and we'll continue to tweak whatever, I mean, whatever traffic problems occur, we'll continue to tweak them as, as we have all along. As, as David said, we've done it at each building as we found a better way to do it and, and will continue to.
Okay, looking at the, the committee, the whole minutes in such.
Planning and zoning minutes.
Yeah, planning and zoning, right. Do we need multiple motions to approve this?
I could summarize it for you if you'd wish to do it in one motion.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, so the motion would be to amend Article fourteen, section fourteen point, section fourteen B point three of Appendix C of the Code of Ordinances, that's the zoning code, by adding public schools to the list of special uses permitted in the COS one Conservation Open Space District. Secondly, approval to amend the special use permit for a planned unit development to allow, in addition to the existing Vernon Hills Park District Recreational Center, and to allow.
Sorry to interrupt, Mike. For sake of clarity, while you can combine the three development approvals on this thing, it probably makes sense to do a separate vote on the text amendment. It's not going to change the required votes, but just in terms of amending the zoning code, it probably makes sense to do that separately.
Since you're bringing that up, can, can you clarify why? I, I know they brought it up with the P and Z, but why they wanted to do an amendment to the current zoning versus switching the zoning from open space to school?
PIB, PIB, Public Institution Buildings District is the zoning district that would allow schools as a special use. If we were to change that, then we would lose the designation, we would, we'd lose the designation of Conservation Open Space, which has provisions to encourage as much open space as possible when considering development. So we'd lose that degree of control. So rather than doing that, we'd simply amend the Conservation, Conservation Open Space District to include schools as, as a special use. Secondly, the recreation center that's there, the aquatic center and the Sullivan Center are indicated as permitted uses in the COS one district. So if we were to change the zoning designation, we would in effect render them non-conforming.
So do you, you have to change the zoning for the, for all of it? Or can you, can't you just change the zoning for the, for the kindergarten space there?
Yeah, the COS one district, as it's shown on the zoning map, would remain in place as proposed right now. We would simply, there'd be, simply be an amendment to the zoning code.
Right.
That would add in public schools.
You zone by lot, not by use.
As a special use.
So you'd have to separate the lot and then that'd be a much bigger issue?
They're not subdividing the lots. They're not, right.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So you want it to be separate?
I was saying, do a motion one on the text amendment?
Yeah.
And then you can combine the other three. That makes the most sense.
All right, well, let's combine the other three because you were on a roll.
Yeah, there's, well, the first one was, there's three total. The first one would be to amend the Article fourteen B, section fourteen B point three of Appendix C of the Code of Ordinances, the zoning code, by adding public schools to the list of special uses permitted in the COS one district. And, and the recommendation is to ask for a motion now for that one.
I move that we adopt the recommendation as so stated by the Building Commissioner, Mike Atkinson.
Second.
Comments or questions? If none, roll call.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
I vote yes for District seventy-three.
President Byrne?
Yeah, Grandpa Byrne votes yes.
We're only, wait, got another one. We're not there yet.
Okay, now for the development itself. The motion would be to amend the special use permit for a planned unit development to allow, in addition to the existing Vernon Hills Park District Recreational Center, and to allow the expansion of a parking lot and related improvements. Secondly, approval of preliminary and final site and landscaping plan approval, and also approval of the building elevations and architecture of the proposed addition, all in accordance with the conditions that are outlined in your packet and as referenced, in compliance with the plans that are also attached to your packet.
Is there a motion?
A motion to adopt the ordinance as, to, it's not adopt the ordinance, it's to generate the ordinance in accordance with the outline provided by the Building Commissioner, Mike Atkinson.
Second.
Easy way to do that is just motion what he said.
Yeah.
Motion, motion and a second. Any further comments or questions from the board? If not, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
President Byrne?
For the record, aye.
Now you can.
Now you can clap.
You guys busted your you-know-whats. A lot of good people right sitting right in this room and when your board hears it, too bad either.
Kudos to all of you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
So may.
Second.
Motion is second. Yeah, voice vote, all in favor? Is there any nays? Ah, the ayes have it. Committee of all meetings adjourned.
Thank you.
Please don't watch your step out there. Village staff is spreading salt as we speak, but it's very treacherous.